Evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting, December third, twenty twenty four. If anyone in the audience needs amplified headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. Not seen any. Let's write your pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Blush.
Yes.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
There.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sapp.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does council have any late changes to the agenda tonight? City manager, late changes.
Nothing major.
All right. Do any council members have any board reports to share tonight? Right, moving along. Have we read, had a chance to read the consent agenda? I'm sorry. Maybe I've reading the consent agenda. Let's change that.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Vouchers numbered one, 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 nine, five, six through one, 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 nine, seven, nine, and E F T payment numbers eight, oh, four through eight, one, eight, in the total amount of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and five cents. Vouchers numbered one, one, two, zero, zero, zero through one, one, two, zero, three, two. E F T payment numbers eight, one, nine through eight, three, seven, in the total amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and sixteen cents. And main graph numbers, D F T, zero, 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 one, seven, five, four. D F T, the zero, 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 one, seven, seven, zero. D F T, zero, 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 one, seven, seven, one. D F T, zero, 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 one, seven, seven, four. Through D F T, zero, 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 one, seven, eight, four, in the total amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Hero warrants numbered four, zero, one, one, through four, zero, one, three, and one, three, seven, five, three, through one, three, eight, five, zero. Warrants, one, 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 nine, eight, five, through one, 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 nine, nine, six, in the amount of three-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Minutes from the business meeting of October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the study session of October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Resolution number one, three, five, four, dash, one, zero, two, four. Amendment number one to work order number B H C, two, four, zero, one, one, for structural design on water red or vent foots, and the September financial status report.
Thank you, Donna. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, the second, to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, the council invites the public to make comments on matters of city business. Comments shall be made to the entire council, not an individual council member. Please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruption of the meeting. If unreasonable disruptive conduct continues, you may be asked to leave the meeting. Donna, anyone that?
General public comment.
We do, Mr. Mayor.
And I just have one more thing. This is a general public comment. If you want to talk about anything else on the agenda, that's, we'll wait for that till that comes up. All right, anyone signed up, you said?
Yes, our first speaker is Karen Salacca.
Is this on? I'm good, okay, sorry. Thanks for letting me speak this evening. It's nice to see so many familiar faces here. My name is Karen Salacca, and I've been a Shelton citizen for around thirty years. I come tonight to ask your ear and guidance of what we can do to expedite the removal of the evidence vehicles that are stored in the Shelton Animal Control Yard. I've been involved with various rescues over the past few years, and have begun to spend time down at our local shelter this past summer. I have been aided in getting many animals adopted out of the shelter, along with facilitating the medical needs of many animals, and since volunteering down there. Since starting my volunteer work, I have heard over and over for months about how there's a plan to remove the vehicles in the yard, and apparently this plan has been in the works for over a year. The dogs down at the shelter are limited to outdoor playtime to a, on a rotation to a concrete area for their supposed enjoyment. Staff is having to take dogs on walks to get them socialized and exercise that they need, which can present a whole host of liabilities. If the yard was cleaned out, we could work on fundraising supplies needed to create additional runs in a play area. This play area could also be used for meet and greet with potential adopters and their personal dogs. This area could also be used for volunteers to come and interact with dogs with socialization. It could also be used for training interactions for the dogs that are there that need additional dog reactive training. It could be also maintained by the youth or adults looking for community service hours by mowing the yard or removing waste. To keep the dogs pinned up so much is not fair to them, and it prolongs their adoptability if the dogs' needs for socialization and reactive training is not met. Removing the vehicles would also allow for animal control officers to do their job more effectively and help more dogs in our area. I am sure you all are aware of the dramatic increase in dog dumping over the past couple of years in our city. It would seem to me that removing the vehicles to the fenced yard next door in another city yard would make more sense than occupying a much-needed space in that location. I am willing to help with fundraising for supplies and labor to create a new play yard if the city does not have it in its budget to make that happen. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing your thoughts on how we can get this plan taken care of.
Thank you.
Speaker is Andrew.
Good morning. I want to talk about several words that have a lot of meaning to me. First one is responsibility. Able to answer for one's conduct and obligations. Trustworthy, able to choose for oneself between right and wrong. Enforcement. When someone is in a position of power, make sure you follow the rules, whether it's a police officer pulling over a speeding car, or your brother catching you cheating at checkers. Leadership. The ability of an individual or a group of people to influence and/or guide followers or members of an organization, society, or team. Accountability is an insurance that an individual or organization is evaluated on its performance or behavior related to something of which it is responsible. Now, those words just don't have other words that follow them. Everyone in this room should do self-reflection and find out if they're following those definitions. And if they're not, for the better of our community and to mitigate the negative impact of not following these paths, they should step aside and resign. If you don't have the ability to make the tough decisions, then let somebody else in there that can. So, let's talk about the camps that we have. So, we have camps that are within the city boundaries, and these camps pop up all over the place. Everybody knows where they're at. I just led a field trip of a couple individuals up to the last one. I ran into our community officer, our community service officer. She had some individuals with her cleaning up an unknown area right off the pump station on Front Street. Did a great job. My hat goes out to her. Some of the stuff they have to deal with, just right down the street where there's tents literally on the railroad tracks. When the train goes by, they're probably within six, eight inches of hitting those tents. They're stuffed in there. It's, it's, it's basically by enabling them and allowing them to be in that environment is the exact description of insanity. And for anybody to think that it's okay to leave people out in weather like that, it's like, it's unheard of. Where does, where does, where's the empathy on that? I mean, that is right there where to inflict harm to themselves or others. When we had our D C R, that's one of the statements that they used to whether they could, you know, basically not incarcerate, but basically take somebody and take them off of the street. We don't have our D C R anymore. I know that we're trying to. I know it's a tough position to, to, to fill. But anyway, you guys need to think about some of these things, because it's not empathetic to leave these people out there. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have one person on Zoom who wants to do a general public comment, and that is Dave.
Hi, Dave.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Dave Redd. I'm the manager of the Shelton Veterans Village. The last time I spoke at the Shelton City Council meeting, I mentioned that a large segment of the city population is struggling to pay its bills and working every day to keep a roof over their heads. In response to that, a few years back, the city formed a council on homelessness, made up of city officials and concerned citizens. After meeting a number of times, the homeless crisis council made some of the recommendations that included a mitigation site, construction of transitional housing, to embed a crisis responders with the police force, and to support affordable housing. To date, the city's worked diligently upon the recommendations of the council in their efforts to help make an impact and the volume of homelessness people within the city. Many of these fund sources used to make the impact are expiring and leaving a funding gap that's affecting continuing efforts. One solution with the funding gap is to impose a one-tenth of one percent sales and use tax. If and when approved, the money generated from this tax would be required to be utilized for affordable housing, behavioral and health-related facilities, and funding for housing-related programs. These recommendations sync perfectly with the Department of Commerce twenty-two-four dash twenty-nine State Homeless Housing Strategic Plan, which aims to reduce homelessness in Washington by strengthening relationships with partners and communities most impacted by homelessness, strengthening the homeless crisis response system by pursuing resources necessary for immediate assistance, temporary housing, and for the one-point-one-million additional housing units that are going to be needed over the next twenty years. All the efforts of the city, the county, and the state are decreased to homeless count and to provide stability to those that have lost homes, or those who are on the, on the edge of losing their homes. And if you remember, I've said this many times to the city council, each person that is given assistance with homelessness requires less first responder help. They cycle in and out of the emergency departments less often. They have fewer inpatient hospital stays and require less use of psychiatric centers, detoxification programs in jails, resulting in lower public costs and more efficient use of tax dollars and better health outcomes for the individuals. Please, please, and thank you, and I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, Dave. Right, we have two presentations this evening. Our first is a swearing-in of a corporal of a motion. Come on up, Officer Gettle. Detective Gettle. Right, right. You can use it. Raise your right hand.
I have my Michael Sargel, who solemnly swear, exalt, sort of, that I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will abide by the code of ethics of the Shelton Police Department.
Will abide by the code of ethics of the Shelton Police Department.
Will faithfully and impartially.
Will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of least probable constituent of Shelton.
Discharge the duties of least probable constituent of Shelton.
Right?
Yes, just some quick notes on Corporal Gettle now. He came those about two and a half years ago, mid-two thousand twenty-two. Part of that, he had over a decade of law enforcement experience, so when he came to us, he had a vast amount of experience and training. And it's shown to be incredible in his work today. He's currently assigned to the Detectives Division. He's just doing an fantastic job there. I really appreciate him there, and just because he's like, well, doesn't mean he's going out to streets saying exactly where it is.
Mark, do you have anything to say?
Just appreciate, yeah, Detective Gettle, Corporal Gettle's work, the City of Shelton's dedication here. I think we have something to sign.
So these guys take off, so we'll just wait a second. All right, we have another presentation from municipal court. And who's presenting?
The team.
All right.
Key members. So I'll make it very brief. Let the administrator take over. So, about three and a half years ago, this court had a concept of creating a treatment court. I would be blunt, we were told it couldn't be done. But we got support from the city council and city manager at the time, and the current one as well, and all we have. And we applied for funds to state courses. We combined mental health card with medical card with the community card. Again, we were told it couldn't be done. I'm not one of her taking, cannot do it. So we decided to combine it with three to five languages at the same time. We look at demographics of the city. People come to this courtroom to speak many languages. There is no accord in this camp that services anybody who does not speak English. However, are committing crimes. Our goal is crime reduction in the rest of the state. We don't want to see them again. So we've been running this court for just over three years, the third year. None of our graduates have been found guilty of a future crime. Zero. So far, so good. So we're applying along, is I think my opinion, a great team keeping this one forward, ever past our recognition from state formally. Some courts want to copy us. But meanwhile, my brilliant administrator decided to apply for a warrant. These courts usually go to die by a quarter, and that's the one one. I stepped aside from that perfect order.
Yeah, so, out of all the counties in Washington, and all the cities in Washington, and all of the courts in those counties and cities, only four received this. So we feel really honored that they gave it to us, so. And I just, it was through the B J A, and this comes around every year, and this year I just decided I'm going to, you know, let them know what we do here and see what happens, so. We call our court the I T C program. It's Individual Therapeutic Court. And that's because of what Judge Reer just said, that it is multiple different things in that court. It's not just DUI court, or, you know, domestic violence, or just mental health, so we deal with it all, and it's a program that Judge Reer had a vision of, and he had a vision of creating a specialized, multi-layered therapeutic court for defendants in our court. One that's inclusive and gives equal access to everyone, no matter what language they speak. If an individual in our court is a good fit for our I T C program, it only matters that they want to learn how to improve their lives, and that they will accept the challenges of this program, and that they want to succeed and follow through. The program could not work as well as it does without all of our team of professionals dedicated to the work at hand. Judge Reer, with his innovative ideas, always encouraging us to embrace change and motivating us to keep moving forward. We're lucky to have the retired judge of Framerton Municipal Court, James Doctor, as our therapeutic court facilitator. We have the public defense attorneys from Sound Defenders and the city's prosecutor team from Genderson Law as part of our team. All of the interpreters that we work with are greatly appreciated and an intricate part of the program. Marie over at Macy High probation is a huge help in working together with the team members to track compliance and enrolled defendants into the different programs. And locally, the counselors at Consejo Counseling are very experienced and provide the excellent counseling services needed for our program. We want to thank our Shelton Municipal Court clerks who do all of the scheduling and file preparation for I T C, as well as our community service supervisor, who takes the crews out to do the hard work in our community. We want to thank the B J A again for recognizing Judge Reer and Shelton Municipal Court, the entire I T C team in this prestigious center. Thank you so much.
Judge Reer, I would, I would say I am not surprised that you and your court has won an award like that. You have been an asset to this court since the day you showed up early on and since I came on, and I appreciate all the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we give big speak counsel, we need to let support from the city council online. And we delivered seven zero three minutes. So I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Judge Reer?
I think our community is very lucky to have you here, so we appreciate you. Thank you so much.
I'm a big fan of the court, and the, I've been invited to a few ceremonies with former council member Kathleen Miguel, and we are so pleased about how the justice system is working in our little town, and that we have options that are not just jail, but for treatment and for rehabilitation, and that we work so closely with all the different organizations within town to make sure that everyone is looked at as an individual, we keep them connected and keep them productive citizens, that they don't become a statistic of recidivism, so. Thanks, thank you again, Judge Reer, for your innovation and for your, your thought and determination to make sure that people are treated fairly, equally, and justly. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. We now, on the business agenda, we have resolution for twenty-twenty-five legislative agenda. City manager Mark Sigler, community economic developer, the development director Jay Hill has information for us.
Thank you, Mayor, deputy mayor, council members. It's that time again that we recognize the city's legislative priorities as our thirty-fifth delegation plans to enter into session for Olympia coming New Year. This is an opportunity to recognize some of the needs, demonstrate those to our, to, to that delegation, and hopefully, once again, see some of the support that we received from them over the last several years. We've been very lucky here, the City of Shelton, to receive that support from that delegation. It shows a great need here for our infrastructure, but also hopefully for some of the amenities that will make this community a better place to live at the same time. Director Hill, Director Harris, Communication Specialist Ricker, a number of staff have been involved in developing this agenda over the last few months. As you know, we met with Senator McEwen in person to demonstrate this agenda at the same time and get feedback. We've had the opportunity to communicate through our, our lobbyist, Troy Nichols, with the two representatives as well, so. They, they've seen this draft legislative agenda at the same time as we're presenting to you here tonight. I would want to bring forward, you know, what we've seen the last several years for funding, and I couldn't get that together in time, but I want to remind you over about two and a half million dollars was granted to the City of Shelton through direct support from our delegation last year. One-point-eight million dollars for the Angleside Water System improvements, and then two-hundred-thousand dollars for the Simpson Railroad Multi-Modal Trail, so. Just the most recent support that we're receiving from them. I'll go through the brief list. I know Jay will probably weigh in a little bit here, because he's been so intimately involved. Number one, as we talked about in the briefing with Senator McEwen, is water infrastructure. That's our largest impediment to development. It could be our most expensive infrastructure improvement needs in the coming several years, so. First and foremost on our list is the Mountain View Pressure Zone Reservoir, a new reservoir to be what the priority for the reservoir study is showing near the existing Mountain View Resort up at the top of the Alpine, Maki Alpine subdivision.
Mickey's Alpine View.
Alpine View subdivision. In that current location, this is based on a lot of data information, but primarily best location and elevation and how it can serve multiple pressure zones, including the upper Mountain View and downtown pressure zones as well. That's about an eight-point-five-million-dollar cost in totality. Our utility rates reflect some of that cost, but a four-million-dollar ask to our delegations that we're recommending at the same time. Anything else on that project, Jay?
That is our most needed water tank, and we'll deliver the most bang for the buck, but there's a couple of others that are listed later in that agenda, but they're, they're not of the top four priorities that we're going to be asking for this year, so. And if they wanted to throw us more money for more water tanks, we wouldn't say no, but another one at the top of Angleside, it's also a priority. It's a priority there. When we came to you last year, that was our number one priority, the booster project that's going this coming year, though, kind of lessens the need for that, gives us more breathing room up there, but we do still eventually need a second angle side for all the projects that are going to go up there too.
Yeah. That's what the one-point-eight million dollar I referred, one-point-eight million dollar appropriation that I referred to as for the Angles, pressures and fixes this year. Two and three may be transportation projects, but could, could be direct appropriations as well, but the multimodal path I mentioned, that's going to go when we, some of the grant documents complete, go under full design, and in the future with the Sandy Williams Grant for the portion from the Marina Downtown, the two-hundred-thousand dollars could cover the Simpson Railroad portion from First Street out to near Highway one-on-one over, but seeking construction funds to complete that project. This is not only a recreational amenity, but also a transportation element. It could take bikes off of our busy roads at, at that recreational element where people could ride bikes for strollers, walk, jog, access the Olympic Park and other areas within the community, and then, as you've seen for many years, Wallace Seale and Spring Road intersection, roundabouts at Thirteenth Street, we still have great needs there to improve our intersections on, on Wallace Seale Boulevard. As you know, during peak hours, they, they are really difficult to traverse without turn lanes. We're going to fix that with some, with some changes to the signalization, but those are short-term fixes. Long-term, they're going to be a roundabout or another, another fix. So, this again is a request for for funds to improve. Those sites, those intersections and forth is homeless mitigation site. Again, it's been on our list for some time. Part of A W C's priority list that's attached here is homelessness response, mental health response. This ties into A W C's agenda that we really need support down to the local communities from the state to help address this issue. It can't all be done on the backs of local constituents, and we need some funding to support us in that measure. Anything else?
I've answered pretty well. I would say, you know, between the, the two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand we're getting from Wash dot local programs and the two-hundred thousand that we awarded from the state legislature, that gives us a lot of money to work on the design of the trail. It's probably more than we need for actually designing the full build-out of the trail with construction drawings and stuff. Unfortunately, both of those allocations allow for any excess funds to be used for right-of-way acquisition, construction, things like that, so we might even be able to give some of the money we've already received, get part of it going, but the final design, you know, that's, that's the big construction drawings for the full, you know, fourteen-foot-wide concrete path with the lights and the benches and the garbage cans and the public art, all that kind of stuff, and that costs about one and a half million dollars to build. It's, it's not cheap, especially with the price of concrete these days, so. You know, we're, we're really excited. We see people out there using that trail now, even though it's not a trail, it's got railroad ties and rails and spikes and all kinds of hazards, but people are already using it, and now we're going to be able to, you know, move forward and let people use it with some dignity and maybe for some excitement. Bike trails are a victory's brawl. They'll connect to our Arts District, it'll connect to our downtown, it'll connect to our largest park. It's, it's going to be a fantastic community event any once it's done, so.
And so, just to kind of summarize the rest of the list here, you'll see that we just basically broke it down to a title about, really, we're not going to be funded, frankly, for all the top requests, but I think it's important to communicate with our delegation what our true needs are. And a lot of these requests, as they get funded, you know, they move up, move up the ladder, right? We can check something off our list that our C I P gets funded, it gets completed. These other projects that we've been communicating with our delegation over the years, it's now familiar to them. They've seen it for a couple of years, they know it's a need, it's a continued need. Now, if those are addressed through other measures, through development, other funding. those are addressed through other measures, through developments, other funding sources, great, they can be removed from the list, but these remain particularly affordable housing and redevelopment of their properties. Those are always an opportunity to re- redevelop our community, utilize unutilized property for housing stock and potential commercial development that buoy our tax base. Infrastructure while stealing Boulevard from highway one oh one is still a concern. Path of that intersection from west center line of Olympic Highway North to one oh one is still Washington State watch dot controlled. We ask our delegation to help hopefully move wash that some improvements there. As you know, the failure, especially on the southbound Olympic Highway North from from all season Boulevard, southbound Olympic Highway North bogs down quite often because there's just not enough room to move cars once they stop at that light. Angle side pressure zone, as we mentioned, there's some fixes in the in the near term, but ultimately a new reservoir is needed on the south side of town at a higher elevation to meet all of that pressure zones needs. Satellite wastewater treatment plant, we've talked about this for quite some time, is eliminating the impact on our main treatment plant on on Fairmont. Moving treatment facilities up to the satellite plant near centers and field. Produce reclaimed water for hopefully economic development purposes, but also opt for rechargeers Oldsboro Creek rather than discharging into open bay from the main plant. A new municipal well at some point in the near future, we will need to identify a new well at the same time as some of these reservoir and storage issues. And then Johns Prairie sewer extension and regional station. We were fortunate enough to partner with Mason County Economic Development Council in Port of Shelton to go to enter into a site analysis study for sewer extension to Johns Prairie. That should be underway now. We should have some results from that that best demonstrate how to get sanitary sewer in that area to hopefully open up a lot of that industrial area and the commercial residential area in between the ports industrial side on Johns Prairie and the existing is existing sewer facilities that are in place now. So I'll touch bases on as well as general policy issues. We we were talking about the transportation benefit district, the council agreed that we should communicate the importance of the ability and the flexibility of small communities, especially to have the ability to extend transportation benefit district funding if if they so choose, if those communities so choose. Right now, the legislation is two ten year periods maximum. So as you know, our transportation benefit district expires April of twenty twenty six and we're planning on a ballot measure in twenty twenty five and communicating that publicly. And once that expires in twenty thirty six, at this point, legislation doesn't allow for that to if pass. Sorry, I jumped the gun a little bit, but if passed that would, your legislation would not allow for that to be extended past twenty thirty six. I think that's the most of what we have on the list. Jay, anything else you want to add?
We also support the E W C's policies. There's a three page document attached to the packet. Some of the highlights are around public safety and affordable housing, things that are important to the community as well. Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to forward resolution number one, three, five, three dash one, zero, two, four to the action agenda for the December seventeenth council meeting on twenty four.
Thank you. We have comments or questions for staff? No, thank you for doing that and thank our thirty fifth delegation for meeting with us and get some of this on the agenda. And those could be a tough year, I believe, in Olympia, but hopefully they've always come through for us. A great group of.
One thing I failed to mention is next step. So after the action agenda on the seventeenth, we'll fully develop this, develop this agenda, send it off to our delegation. Troy Nichols, at that point, there are legislative request forms that need to be filled out. Mary is quite versed in those and will help out as a team here to get those those actual requests that go into the Senate and the House to specifically request those funds. We'll continue to monitor those. As you know, Troy Nichols provides weekly updates as the session moves through, so we can understand what bills are moving through and then we'll take the opportunity in February in action days to meet with our delegation specifically to continue to communicate our agenda and really see what else we can provide them to move any of these requests forward.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion to second to forward resolution number one, three, five, three dash one, zero, two, four to the action agenda of December seventeenth, twenty twenty four council meeting. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. All right. Our next item is resolution fleet management lease agreement. Finance director Mike Giddens.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. I'm bringing to you for your consideration, the enterprise fleet management documents that would upon your approval, allow the city manager to sign and execute these. As you know, we've been looking at this model for a couple of years now. Brought it to you in a study session. We then gone out and talked with references close to us, Mason County uses this model. We've received a lot of favorable praise on this, both from the users and administrators of the program. So as a reminder, we did put in the twenty twenty five budget, some lease amounts for vehicles. So this is to formalize the actual program. In your briefing, I highlighted some of the benefits. Think one of the bigger benefits for us is we don't, as you know, have a lot of personnel on the city of Shelton to manage the whole process of not only acquiring vehicles, but also on the other end, when we're disposing of them. This really facilitates it and I think gives us a bigger bang for our buck, so to speak. To be able to acquire vehicles at our government rate, but then sell them for a better amount than we're currently able to do and have them manage many of those processes. So with that, I'll leave it to you for your consideration to have to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to for resolution number one, three, five, five dash one, one, two, four to the action agenda on the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four council meeting for further consideration.
Thank you. Comments or questions for staff? This keeps our fleet younger as well, correct? Yes. We've got, we've got cars from like nineteen ninety one with like eighty thousand miles on them.
I I think particularly a focus is our police fleet.
Yes.
We have a number of vehicles are well over a hundred fifty thousand miles. We're spending quite a bit of money each year just on maintaining those vehicles and keeping them in service and it's as it's a council priority to maintain our public safety. You know, for sort of public safety department, they need to be responsive and they need to have responsive and appropriate vehicles to do that. So this is a this is a program that allows us to implement a number of vehicles next year, up to five vehicles in our police department that we really wouldn't have the opportunity to do if if we were purchasing you know, in full upfront.
How many have similar project, project going on as well, right?
They've been using the sleep service, yeah. All right. We have a motion to second to forward resolution number one, three, five, five dash one, one, two, four to the action agenda, December seventeenth, twenty twenty four for council meeting for for the consideration. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. We are receiving from a regular meeting to open a public hearing. We have an ordinance for a budget supplemental twenty twenty four and finance director Mike Giddens. That's your turn again. You left too soon.
Thank you. So I'm bringing before you really an amendment, if you will, a supplemental budget for this fiscal year, twenty twenty four. I know it's at the very end and we spent a lot of time on budget. Sometimes things happen, a lot of things, as you can see here, I'm not going to highlight everything, but just as a reminder, we can only spend up to your authority. So what you've approved for us. We can take in more revenue over what we budgeted, but we can't spend over. So what this document does is allows us to, in some cases, recognize some grant revenues and the associated expenses. So as an example of the general fund, our designated crisis responder grant that came about really after we had established the twenty twenty four budget. So this recognizes both the revenue and the expense to give the general fund budget that capacity. Also, the flop camera system was, as you know, you've heard in study session and approved that we received grant money and then the expense on the other side. I wanted to explain that in some cases, we're using a word a word, a hyphenated word, we're deobligating money. As you know, we have capital funds set up. So at times we through the budget process, put money into those capital funds to spend on a capital project. Sometimes that project doesn't happen as we expected. So to bring that money back over to the operating budget for deobligating it, it doesn't necessarily mean that the project will never happen, but it could be that grant money we expected didn't come through. The project didn't require as much money, but we have to formally take that out of the capital fund. I also wanted to point out, we have about thirty eight thousand dollars left of ARPA funds. We need to obligate that towards an expenditure this fiscal year by December thirty first. So we're putting that towards a police vehicle that we purchase. That's a perfectly good expense for that. So we want to make sure that we have that or that money would have to go back. Otherwise, on the supplemental budget, we had in the equipment rental and maintenance fund, we had allocated for the patch truck in twenty twenty three. We fully expected to expend it then, but a part of that didn't arrive until twenty twenty four. And so that's giving us budget authority for that. But I think that other than what I wrote, which was in more detail and summarizes for the public and you what we're asking in this.
Thank you, Mike. Donna, anyone sent a republic testimony?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Maybe a reading of ordinance number two, zero, two, six, dash one, zero, two, four.
Ordinance number two, zero, two, six dash one, zero, two, four. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending the annual budget for the year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move forward ordinance number twenty twenty six dash one, zero, two, four to the summer seventeen city council meeting for further consideration.
If you comments or questions? It's more of a housekeeping issue, budget modifications that used to happen throughout the year. Now we're kind of just doing it. You know, one like at the end of the year. So thank you for all the hard work and keeping us all in balance and and any questions? Right. We have a motion to second to forward ordinance number two, zero, two, six dash one, zero, two, four to December seventeenth, city council meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carry. This public hearing is closed. Open another public hearing. Now we have an ordinance for sales and use tax for house related services. City manager Mark Siegler has details for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Director Hill is going to join me. Jay has years of experience in in housing programs of the community. So we've really been relying his experience to inform us on options and alternatives. I'll start with a little bit of history on how we got here. Jake can add add in kind of the options and alternatives and kind of what I've best described to the councils and menus items and what's allowable under the funding. So first and foremost, the Mason County housing needs assessment was published in twenty twenty two, December of twenty twenty two. It identified a five year need for housing for extremely low income earners in the county, which is thirty, less than thirty percent of median income. That was indicated to be two hundred and thirty one units and then very low at thirty percent, sixty percent of median income at two hundred eighty nine units. Particularly in the city of Shelton, very little has been done as far as affordable housing developments in here. We can we can point to New Horizons community. Probably since since then, specifically towards homeless veterans. In twenty twenty two, again, the city established a limited term homeless task force that met six times the sets of various aspects of the impacts of homelessness on individuals and resulting effects in the community. We had council members, local law enforcement, county commissioners, Mason Health representatives, business community, homeless and social service advocates that participated on this task force. And recommendations were presented to council in on November twenty second, twenty twenty two. There were seven total bullet point recommendations. I'll go through those a little bit and and give you a synopsis of where we believe we are at since as staff since our city since that was presented. First and foremost was development of a mitigation site. At this point, there is there is not a mitigation site. There's obviously a shelter provided by Community Lifeline. The city did supply twenty thousand dollars of the ARPA funds were received in I don't know if we received them twenty one or twenty two, but they were distributed in twenty two to Community Lifeline for operations. A second bullet point was support for grant applications for current shelter operations or options. City has provided legislative support to show youth connect for their housing for homeless youth in downtown Shelton. And we have obviously provided property for the Veterans Village that's operated by New Horizons. That's on a lease agreement with the city of Shelton. Third, support for grant applications for community partners for to provide rapid rehousing. I'm not aware of any support that the city has provided at this point or any requests that have come to the city to request at this point. Number four was one, two, Mason County focused designated crisis responders potentially embedded with Shelton Police Department. We were fortunate enough a year and a half ago to receive a grant, a six month grant, kind of a startup grant from A W C to embed a designated crisis responder within the Shelton Police Department. We subsequently received a grant from there's a Mason Behavioral Health Organization for another year. Director Giddens just spoke about that grant for this year to continue that designated crisis responder within the police department since then. Unfortunately, a designated crisis responder left, left employment, there's Mason Behavioral Health. And so we've been without that position now since September, September sixth. Storage locker. Number five on this was storage lockers co-located with mitigation site. Obviously, no mitigation site. There hasn't been any lockers. It wasn't clear who would manage facilitate those lockers at that point. It was just kind of a blanket statement and recommendation. Public dashboards on the city website that detail what shelter beds are available. At this point, we don't operate that. We haven't seen a way to operate that on the city's website as Community Lifeline does provide us shelter beds available every night or shelter beds that are being utilized. And they've committed to having a couple of shelter beds available for emergency operations. So there isn't a broader I guess community of of the shelter beds that we would facilitate or provide. It's most important that those are provided to our police department and first responders so they can address people that are out in inclement weather. They might be camping where they where they shouldn't be, or they really need some assistance to get inside and get into the shelters that's available. The seventh was a support for affordable housing. As you know, the we brought several measures to you. The council has approved reduced lot size for a neighborhood residential zone from six thousand square feet to forty five hundred square feet. That apparently makes it a little more affordable to develop subdivisions, new subdivisions, particularly eliminated the height restrictions. So hopefully that means that the density can be increased for housing and therefore lead to affordable housing, but nothing specifically that would deed restrict housing, affordable housing. So the for the housing related services, sales taxes, R C W eighty two, one, four, five, three, zero. The funds can be used, sixty percent of the funds must be utilized for constructing or acquiring affordable housing. I guess I'll go back. Again, we came to the city council back in June of twenty twenty four with alternatives to expand affordable housing options for further consideration back in October eighth of this year. Again, we discussed funding alternatives and the council, a majority of the council asked us to bring bring back this option, which is under R C W eighty two, fourteen, five, thirty, the housing related services sales tax. Majority of the council asked us to bring bring back this option, which is under R C W eighty two, fourteen, five, thirty, the housing related services sales tax. For further consideration. So just a little bit of the. Of how the funding would work and then I can pass it over to Jay and talk about the options. So minimum of sixty percent of the funding must be used for constructing or acquiring affordable housing. That can be emergency transitional supportive housing and new units for affordable housing with it within an existing structure. It can be used to construct or acquire behavioral health related facilities or requiring land for those purposes. Funding the operations and main of new units of affordable housing and facilities where housing related programs are provided or duly constructed. Elevation, evaluation, excuse me, and treatment centers. So this must meet six, so six percent must meet these demographics or persons within these demographics, persons with behavioral health issues. Their health disabilities, veterans, senior citizens, persons who are homeless or at risk of being homeless, including families with children. Unaccompanied homeless youth or young adults, persons with disabilities or domestic violence survivors. The remaining of those funds can be used for the operation, delivery or evaluation behavioral health treatment programs and services. A little bit about what could be collected. So it's limited to one tenth of one percent annually on goods and services. So essentially a a sales tax on the goods and services. The most immediate. Timeframe when this could be collected or start to be collected would be April if it's adopted anytime before the end of the year. Actually, the city would see a collection dispersment in July of twenty twenty five. With that collection are anticipated, the anticipated revenue would be about three hundred and ten thousand dollars if that was so so collected. Think. I'll hand it over to you, Jay, if you don't mind.
Right. So three hundred and ten thousand sounds like a lot, but as soon as you start talking about constructing, building, acquiring, it doesn't go very far very quickly. So we we looked at different options that we could do to use the money to create force multiplier for the people who are already providing housing in this community. So how can we support them? The number one idea that came to the top was. A waiver of our general facilities charges or water sewer, other directions per state law. If we waive those charges, we have to make that whole pronged general fund and this funding could be used to make that whole. So that adds up to about seventeen thousand dollars per unit, which might be enough in some cases to tip the calculus in the right direction. Towards an affordable developer, being able to construct new units, additional units at an existing facility. There's already, you know, a lot of providers in town who might be able to take advantage of some of this money, put some extra units on property that they already own, so on and so on. And so we've already had a couple of discussions this year with a couple of those providers. And we haven't talked to them specifically about this necessary service population issue because there is that string attached to it that the people have to be. Under sixty percent of median income and in one of those special populations. So we just don't know yet how that plays into those providers. Work plans and their financial calculations and whatnot, but we do know there are providers in town who serve those populations currently who have those. We just don't have an exact calendar for that concern, but it, like I said, it's about seventeen thousand dollars per unit that we defray the costs on, which can really help. I know, I know there's one project, I don't want to mention names, but they were, they were really, really close and we didn't have the funding necessary to do exactly this. And had we been able to construct the infrastructure for them, we would have more affordable house units right now. So we weren't able to to help them in the way that they need to be helped. So this, that's just one example and that can, you know. Repeat over and over. That's eight units per year is kind of what I I prepared like a sample budget just of an idea of like if we have the money, what could we do with it? So we plan for about eight per year and that's the direct provision of housing. If that money wasn't used, say we didn't have eight people or eight units, excuse me, proposed within a year. That money could roll over and then, you know, fund a larger project next year, if not, if not eight this year than sixteen or twenty four or something like that. Other ideas that come right out of the homeless task force money and they could be part of the the forty percent that's not obligated directly to the provision of the housing. Is the the preparation of E D U plans. So if we had stock plans on file from an architect already approved through the building department, that basically somebody can just come in and say. I want to put an E D U number three in my backyard. We can just basically do a quick side review and give them a permit. And then again, it has to. If there's any funding attached to that and so on, it would have to be deep restricted. But if people were just building, they use and being able to utilize the plans, that would help with all levels of workforce housing, all levels of stabilization of our our housing market currently. It can be used to purchase land. We have a little bit of money in the reserve for that and used for shelter stabilization sample budget. We kept a little bit for that. One of the things that we heard most during our listening sessions for the comprehensive plan was a lack of. Like singular point of housing resources. There's no housing office within the city or county where someone can. Find any information on the web about current rentals, unless you're looking through the paper or unless you're, you know, specifically hunting down. The different apartment complexes or things. There's just not one good collection of information on current rentals, housing providers. People coming to this community for the first time, don't think of calling Kitsap Housing Authority as one of the potential options on Kitsap County, but they they have a presence here as well as Mason County. So there's, there's a lot of different resources that we could provide by having a housing planner staff. Including someone to apply for grants. We had a request this year, we had a request last year at the at the very last minute, asking for infrastructure funding through some state grants funds. And, you know, it's it's a last minute, we all dive in as as much as we can, but we'd love to be more proactive instead of waiting for a last minute request from somebody to be able to. Go out and hold the community and have this in a work plan in advance. As we talk about the construction of more multifamily units, we have to have more than sixteen hundred multifamily units planned for over the next decade. For the numbers that we've got the state to adopt. A lot of those are going to have to be deep restricted affordable and we need someone to manage that kind of program and to help with great funding, to help with long range planning for implementation. To help be able to chase down the money. And so that's a another way where, as I mentioned, we can have a force multiplier effect. Having a person dedicated to housing, housing services, housing planning, so on. And then again, in the sample budget, there was. And the sample budget is just a sample of it. You're not adopting that budget today, by the way, it was just an idea that you could do with the money. And the the last thing was for acquisition and construction. We have properties throughout the community that fall derelict and this is something that's been mentioned, I think, twice tonight already. We have properties that. Fall into either city receivership or have to be baited for a variety of reasons and the city could undertake acquisition of those properties. And work with local providers to construct housing of these properties. So that gives us more skin in the game to be able to. Satisfy any outstanding needs and so on and actually take advantage of. An underutilized resource instead of having a vacant lot, we're putting families on there, we're putting our our future workforce, we're putting our. New residents or old residents or whatever. So anyway, those were some of the ideas that we had on on how we could most effectively utilize the money. If we're just trying to, you know, if if we were a larger jurisdiction, had a lot more sales tax, you know, maybe we could be building, you know. Multiple numbers of apartments every year, but this this for the amount of money that we're able to generate through this, this is the best way that we could move the ball forward. And I think it does so in a pretty meaningful way. So that's. To share and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Donna, does anyone have a public testimony?
Please do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker in person is Angela.
Thank you again. So this is a touchy topic, isn't it? There's three individuals on the council that are in support of this tax that I know of. Obviously, I'm not in support of those three individuals. I'm not so sure that this tax is the direction that we want to go. To me, it's just another part of the industrial homeless complex that throws good money after bad. I believe there are some great nonprofit organizations. In our community that do a hell of a job. But I don't know if we would be able to earmark it to just those individuals or those organizations, because there's other organizations. That should be ran out of town. So how do you, how do you take responsibility for that? Where does, where are those funds going to go? Is three hundred thousand dollars even a drop in the bucket? Is it going to do what we need to do? I highly doubt it. And I don't believe that it would at all. Is it going to create more of a negative influx of individuals coming from other communities? If you're downtown at all, you already see them. I talked to multiple business owners. You walk down the alleys and they're nothing but used for a bathroom. You go out to the tracks, you see the camps. So what are we doing right now? What can you show me that's mitigating this negative behavior with a negative impact with the funds? That we're already getting into Mason County? If you can show me some positive stuff with that, then maybe we can have a conversation. But again, those are just my thoughts and my opinions and they may not reflect everybody. But I believe that this does not need to be a council vote, that this needs to go to the public. It needs to be voted on by everybody in our community because it affects everybody in our community, not just the seven city council people sitting up here in front of me. So let's, let's make sure that we go through this with the right intentions. And make sure that we do it the right way. All I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Susan Kirchhoff.
Hi. Good evening. I didn't know I can talk earlier, so I combined mine. So just so you know that. Good evening, council members, mayor and Esco city officials. My name is Susan Kirchhoff. I'm the founder. Excuse me, and you, director of the youth connection in Mason County. We have two amazing drop in centers, one in downtown Shelton. And one in Belfair where we serve our young people that are homeless or at risk of homeless between the ages of twelve, twelve and twenty four. And we've been averaging thirty five individuals daily in our center. I just want to say thank you for your support and encouragement as we navigate the complexity of our remodel. I want to personally invite each of you to our appreciation event this Thursday at four thirty to seven. Bring your I D because it's a wine pairing event. You can't get served if you don't have I D. With the upcoming passing of the federal budget, we're hopeful and speaking life into that the youth connection will be fully funded for our transitional housing project. I just wanted to encourage us as we head into this season, holiday brings on happiness, but it also adds a lot of stress. And especially as the costs have increased, tending to have donations decrease. And expendable income is now more limited than ever. These increases in financial factors can cause an increased number of homeless young people. As the strain of meeting financial obligations inside their families and the tensions arising. It changes the temporary housing arrangements as well as their permanent housing arrangements. As we look at this housing related service tax that the city is looking at, individually, the cost will be minimal impact. Each of us would pay one cent for every two dollars spent on taxable items. Yet as a collective, it has the potential to make some impacting changes. Projections state the amount could be three hundred and ten, which would be out a hundred and eighty six thousand for something to do with housing. Such as an underage shelter for youth, which is the highest growing population in our county right now. In twenty twenty three, Washington State reported twenty eight thousand thirty six homeless people, sixteen percent being under eighteen. That's four thousand four hundred and eighty five young people. There is not a place in our community for people under eighteen. I just want to state, I gotta make sure I have my time. Some would say go home, some what might not understand and we have heard the stories that their home is not where it's safe place and it's safer for them to be outside in the cold. We want to change that. I want to state I am for passing this sales tax as long as there's a committee that goes involved in it, that it's just not dictated where the money goes. The Bible calls us to give to the less fortunate. Buddha believed that giving is a powerful source of merit. And that brings joy to both the giver and the receiver. And as humans, I would hope we would have enough compassion for those less fortunate. I for one am willing to pay one cent for every two dollars I spend. I buy a cup of coffee for seven.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tamara Wolfson.
Good evening, council members, mayor of Esco, deputy mayor Sherman and community members. My name is Tamara A. Wolfson and I am a resident of Lake Glenrick and I shop local a lot. I'm also a former member of the very first task force on housing and homelessness that was back around two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, thereabouts. And I recognize through all the years of conversation around this. This topic that the needs have grown and that the challenges have grown and it's impacting all of us in a variety of ways. By bringing this ordinance forward, you are demonstrating leadership. Working to be solutions oriented, which is a form of accountability. As a person who shops local first, this small increase in my sales tax will not dissuade me. It actually encourages me knowing that my shopping dollars will have an even greater impact. And in the betterment of our shared community and the different places that I like to go and hang out and encourage friends to do so as well. Not only is this ordinance the right decision, it will provide a strong return on this investment. These few dollars, while not, while they may be small, they have the potential to be mighty. And the power of change that they can help facilitate. And it will also be able to allow other dollars, as you heard earlier. That are currently, you know, spent with what we call repeat customers. You know, our first responders having to always work with the same customers over and over in the emergency room and those aren't the most productive use of our tax dollars. This will help to mitigate that, making sure that those dollars are now repurposed into ways that can have a better. Positive impact for our shared community and then also frees up the time of our first responders and our emergency rooms. To be able to work with more customers because they have that capacity available to them. And in trying to do a little bit of brief research, I know that several cities in the state have started to implement this. And they are seeing a really strong return on that investment. And I don't know which cities specifically as I was bouncing around, but one of them in some of the data that they shared. For every dollar of the sales use tax of this one tenth of one percent that they were using. To help mitigate various homeless and housing issues, whether it's helping to prevent someone from becoming homeless in the first place, helping with construction. Helping with mitigation sites, all of the different things to help with the overall public safety individually and collectively. It also was generating an additional eight dollars to work with that one dollar. This is a huge return on investment. Not just financially, but public health wise, and I really encourage you to take that step forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Erin, the Martinak.
Mayor and council members. My name is Erin Martinak and I am the current board chair for Community Lifeline Homeless Shelter. Just like Susan said, I didn't speak earlier, so I want to just catch you up on what we've been doing lately. We are with Susan's help, starting to renovate our system and our program to. Create more case management and and more direction and support for. Our guests to obtain more supportive and permanent housing. We are not able to fully support that program because we are existing on two grants. One for case management and one through the county for only two overnight staff members, which leaves us at a disadvantage. And the people we serve are left as at disadvantage because we have to close our doors during the day. I don't know how cold it was at your house last night, but my house was thirty two degrees. And and it's cold out there. It's cold during the day. And so. It's true. I mean, Mr. Jewett said, we need to help these people and we need a sustainable, responsible. Accountable program to help them and what we have is what we have. So I would encourage you to pass this tax and also to work with the existing. Agencies in town to create something that is more sustainable. If we don't like what we have, let's not create something new. And go through all the. Growing pains. Let's work with what we have and improve the programs and the ways that we would like to see them improved. With more support, we could provide a day program where we can get people out of the cold. With more support, we could, um, provide a day program where we can get people out of the cold and off of the streets to be able to do case management skills training, daily structure and support um, to help people to move forward in their lives and not just, um, house them or kick them out of our street where we don't see them. I think helping our neighbors is something that this town stands for and that, um, and that we have great, great, have morals and values that really support the desire to help our neighbors, and I encourage you to pass the tax. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Speaker President Jennifer Thompson.
Mr. Mayor and Speaker Council, thank you for listening tonight. I just signed up. It's very momentous. Add a few comments based on what I've heard tonight and on some things I've learned over the last seven months and met with many of you and have been a lot of leaders trying to inform myself about the status of houselessness. I am a resident and been here two years. My background is that I'm a certified public accountant in my area, especially is non-public management in the area of social services. My clients include healthcare providers, um, services that are given to homeless individuals, um, and a range of social services. What I have learned in this area of expertise is that nonprofits, just because you have noticed nonprofits are, they're generating their own funding. They don't have a secret source of funds that is in addition to government. My clients rely in many cases on ninety-five percent of their funding that comes from federal, state, and county and city grants. So when we talk about the nonprofit sector, it is important to remember that they are a partner with all levels of government. As I have learned that you all, as a town, have been talking about the dire situation of houselessness in this town for years, right? We even had a committee meet on it three years ago, and really nothing's been done as a result of those recommendations. My point here is that we all agree this is a serious problem. A serious problem will require funding. We, we can't address this problem without funding. Passing the sales tax is critical. I also want to point out that in the event that council doesn't pass it, Mason County is going to, and when they do, okay, sorry, when they do, when Mason County passes it, Shelton will lose its ability to control that three hundred thousand. If Shelton passes this first, they maintain control of this pot of money, and by the way, your suggestions were excellent. They were amazing, and they all provided very surgical, precise responses in a way that you could get maximum impact for whatever small pot of money it is, and three hundred thousand isn't a lot. But let's maintain to control of it at the city level so that we can continue to build these nonprofit partnerships. Mason County will also pass their version, and the city and the county will share. One tenth of one percent is tiny. It's nowhere near enough. It's, it's a fraction of what we need, but it's a start, and let's start making steps towards solutions so that in twenty years, we maybe have solved the problem. We can be a model. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one speaker on the phone, and that is Colleen Carmichael. Let me ask her to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Nisco, Deputy Mayor Sherman, and fellow council members. I'm Colleen Carmichael, the executive director for New Horizon Communities. Tonight, New Horizon Communities is here to show our support for ordinance number two zero two seven dash one zero two four. As you all know, we have been participating in these city council meetings for the past several years. We have heard at almost every public comment, both here and other meetings, that local businesses are frustrated by the lack of action from elected officials to address the growing homeless population downtown. We have also heard from residents of Shelton at presentations we have made to Rotary, Kiwanis, Lions Clubs, churches, and veteran organizations that they are concerned over the growing number of people who are struggling to stay housed. This one tenth of one percent sales tax is the type of action needed to show the people who you were elected to represent, that you are tired of politics as usual, and you want to give more people the ability to get housed and stay housed. Your vote to support this ordinance sends a clear message that you want to help the elderly, disabled, abused, and veterans who fought for our freedom. Your vote to support this tax tells the businesses of our community that you have heard their frustrations, and you are doing something constructive to address their issues and concerns. Your vote to support this ordinance lets families who are unable to provide basic needs to their children know that they are not alone. Your vote to support this tax tells the county and state that you are doing what you can to support housing for the people who live, work, and shop here every day. We know that you take your roles seriously, and you want to do what you can to make Shelton the best it can be. We know that you will take action to reduce any costs to the city because you value the employees that work for you. We know that you want to do what you can to lift up the businesses that give us so much great food, shopping, services, and entertainment every single day. We know you want to send a message to all the agencies from the hospitals to law enforcement, the EMTs to the housing providers, that you value the work they do every day to help the people in need. We applaud the city staff for doing the hard work needed to put together such a comprehensive request. I'm grateful to several of the city council members who I know are actively engaged in nonprofits that work to provide affordable housing in our community. You have a front row seat to the needs of the people who can't pay their rent and struggle to keep food on the table. This ordinance is a cost-effective, impactful, responsible way to show the residents and businesses how important they are to you. We are excited to see the positive influence these new revenues are going to have on our city. Thank you.
Right. And may I have a reading of ordinance number two zero two seven dash one zero two four?
Ordinance number two zero two seven dash one zero two four. In accordance with the City of Washington imposing an additional sales and use tax of one tenth of one percent for housing and related services as authorized by RCW eight two point one four point five three zero and having a new chapter three point four seven to the Shelton Municipal Code.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to forward ordinance number two zero two seven dash one zero two four to the action agenda on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, the council meeting for further consideration.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions?
I just wanted to let you know that we've been waiting for so long for something to happen, and this is our chance. And this gives us flexibility on how we get to spend it. It's not gonna have to necessarily be a mitigation site. It can be anywhere along the line of services that we have among all our service providers. It will give the council a choice of how we strategically use the, the small funding that we do get. We can build it up for a couple of years, and then we go for a big project. We can piecemeal it out for a little projects. We can, I know we also did something like a a singular occupancy, um, relax some of the, some of the regulations towards that as well, along with decreasing the house, um, lot size and also eliminating any, um, levels or, um, you know, the height limits that we can for housing. Um, this is an incredible way to have flexibility to have different projects, whether it be buying up a few homes for Habitat for Humanity or even thinking about um, increasing our capacity at Crossroads and buying more units for, for consumption at any level. Um, there's a housing crisis, not just a homelessness crisis, um, at all levels from your first apartment to, um, a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house. There's nothing to buy that's affordable. There's nothing to rent that's affordable. Um, this gives us flexibility and will ease all along, um, our continuum of services. It will give people more opportunities. We have people sitting at the shelter waiting for that section eight housing to open up, and we don't know where it's gonna be. They might get sent somewhere else. We have people waiting, um, for anything that's affordable. And we have people stacked, stacking up, living on people's couches, and the cost of this is gonna be, I just bought a six-dollar coffee down the street. It was six dollars and fifty-three cents. If we increase the tax by point one percent, it becomes six dollars and fifty-four cents. So if I take, and if the council members or anyone in the audience, let's go get a couple coffees, and it's gonna cost us two cents more for that transaction to take place, and that money's gonna go to a specific project that will alleviate the housing pains that's going on, not just in this city, but all over the country. And we can be like another point of light example, like the judge of a, of a place that stood their ground and said, we need to take care of people, our most vulnerable people, and now is the time, and winter is coming, and it's cold. It's Christmas time as well. This is Christmas town. And this is something that we've been waiting for, and this is something that we need to pass, and we need to think about, take care of, take care of this matter, take care of our citizens. Thank you very much for your time.
Sure. Um, well, first off, I want to thank everybody who spoke tonight. It's always great to have people interacting at these meetings, especially our public hearings, the best one I've been part of. Um, I feel really strongly about this. I think this is the one tool we have to actually interact with our nonprofit partners. I'm really excited about potentially doing DFC offsets for low-end housing. I think this is the greatest tool that we are authorized in, in RCW to actually utilize to address our affordable housing crisis and our unhoused issue. So I think this is really what we have available to us, and I, I really hope that, uh, the council can agree with me on that one. Thank you.
I would say I was on the Housing Beautiful Fides reward for about the last seven years, and I've just turned that over to Councilmember SAP, and, um, the nonprofits have been, are asking for more and getting less. Um, the county gets most of their funds for, for this recording fee, which are, uh, you get recording fees through development and building permits, and I believe, is that how that works?
Anything recorded in the assess, in the assessors office. It could be, you know, it could be land use or any other documents that are recorded, even letting marriage licenses and things like that. Yeah.
So as we know, that there's not been a whole lot of that the last couple of years, so the, so the revenue's depleting, people are asking for more to run their operations, and, and I think, you know, and I've said this before, and it's, you know, cliche, it's, it gives us some skin in the game. It gives us a chance to, uh, work for their nonprofits, uh, come up with other solutions, maybe, you know, maybe, uh, build a pallet shelter somewhere down the road, uh, you know, but this is, you know, like I said, I, I don't wanna, I know people struggle, and I, I know sales tax is, is a, you know, let's put it this way, it's one dollar per one thousand, so we would have to spend a thousand dollars of taxable items at Walmart, toilet paper and shampoo, and that even costs us a dollar, and we can leverage these funds as three hundred thousand, maybe a little more to, you know, to help uh, Crossroads or Community Lifeline or Turning Point, um, Youth Connect. So they're waiting for me to say Youth Connect. Um, you know, we could use these funds to help them, um, do that, and I think maybe we can add some units to, uh, the housing authority or, you know, down the road if we, you know, if we grow as a city, and then the funds get deeper or get more plentiful. Um, before sitting back here and, and on, in these chairs, you know, I, I wondered whose problem is this, I mean, but, you know, sitting here for all these years, it's really all of our problem, and, and it's such a small price to pay to have a little bit of a say in, in how we work on the problem, and I, I've, I, I would hope that the council would pass this and, and move it forward, and, and let's, just give it a shot to see if, if it works, you know, and, you know, not everything always works the first time, and, you know, sometimes you will make mistakes, or we do the wrong thing, but that's what learning is all about. We'll learn and we'll make it better, you know, next year, so, um, uh, let's see. I think that we have a lot of nonprofits, good nonprofits here. I think everybody has great intentions. I, you know, is everything perfect? Absolutely not, but you know, everybody has their heart in the right place, and everybody's doing this for a reason, so, um, that is what I have to say. So at this point, we, we have a motion and a second to forward ordinance number two zero two seven dash one zero two four to the action agenda in December seventeenth, twenty four. Council member for the consideration, um, Donna, I'd like a, a roll call over to you and a nay, please.
Okay. Councilmember Lutch?
Nay.
Councilmember Sterns?
Yay.
Councilmember Delmore?
Yeah.
Mayor Nisco?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Sherman?
Nay.
Councilmember Sapp?
Nay.
And Councilmember Hootiers?
Yay.
Thank you, Donna. The motion carries. We're now closing public hearing. We're doing a regular meeting. Our only action item is a resolution regarding the labor contract. City manager Mark Ziegler has details.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Um, I'm really pleased tonight to bring you, um, contracts for three of our bargaining units here at the city of Shelton. Um, as we've talked about in developing our twenty twenty-five budget, um, our priorities have, have been, um, maintaining a labor force, um, public safety, uh, maintaining our assets, fiscal responsibility, in working with these labor groups throughout the last several months to come to terms on what, or two, three-year contracts and one, one-year contract. I think we've made a lot of headway in understanding, um, both the city's, um, assets and capabilities and the needs of, needs of our, of our workforce, and so I, I'm, again, I'm pleased to bring this to you tonight. Uh, again, the three labor contracts, um, one with the Shelton Police Guild. This is a three-year contract for twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. Um, but I should go back. All of these contracts expire December thirty, this year, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the Shelton Employees Guild was comprised of our public works, our parks, our facilities, staff, all the staff within the utility departments, and the International Association Machinists and Aerospace Workers, Local Lodge W thirty-eight. This is primarily what we call our Customer Service Guild. Um, this is comprised of our records clerks, our administrative support, um, staff, our, um, our customer service staff, our code enforcement officer, our animal control officer. The Customer Service Guild and the Police Guild are recommending, it's three-year contracts, and Shelton Employees Guild were recommending a one-year contract. We did that on purpose and agreed to upfront because we wanted to get these staggered. It's a lot of work for our staff. It's a lot of work for all the departments that are involved in these, these negotiations to work through this process, and we felt it'd be better to take one of the guilds off of that three-year term, enter into a one-year agreement, enter up, enter into negotiations again next year, and hopefully come to another three-year term with them, and then we get them staggered, reduce the workload, uh, for staff and, uh, be able to manage that a little more appropriately. Uh, one thing we've, we've talked about moving through these negotiations, having regular meetings, quarterly meetings with our, with our labor force, uh, to support and maintain those relationships moving forward, and, and having a firm understanding and, and continuing the great relationship we have with those. I want to thank our, um, Shelton Police Guild, our Shelton Employees Guild, uh, the representatives of those, and, and the Customer Service Guild, the representatives that sat on the negotiating table, and all the members within that guild and their hard work in moving forward with these contracts I'm recommending to you tonight, and I'm asking, uh, for action tonight, uh, and final approval with my signature.
Thank you. Donna, must I have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
You have a reading of resolution number one three six zero dash one one two four.
Resolution number one three six zero dash one one two four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to execute labor contracts with the Shelton Police Guild, Shelton Employees Guild, and the International Associations of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, Local Lodge W thirty-eight.
Thank you, Donna. We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve resolution number one three six zero dash one one two four as presented.
Right. Comments, questions?
I just wanted to say thank you to our unions, thank you to our hardworking employees. Um, I hope that we dealt with you fairly and both the board. I hope that we not only did that, that we are treating you fairly, that you feel like you're being paid what you're worth, and that we appreciate all your hard work into the city, and that we also appreciate you taking the small-town discount to the feeling of being a place. So thank you very much. So thank you very much to the employees and to the management who've got this bargaining through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for your work and everybody involved in the in the negotiations. It went pretty fast, so that's that shows a sign of good leadership with you and and also the respect that the staff has.
Many department heads, management, Leander Sharp, our human resource manager, put a lot of effort in into these these negotiations and these processes, so I really have to pin a lot of the thanks on on her efforts to this process.
Right. That's great. Okay, anything else? We have a motion, a second to approve resolution number one three six zero dash one one two four presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Posted. Motion carries. Mark, you have city manager report tonight.
Right. Just a couple of things. So just before the meeting, we had a short volunteer recognition ceremony out in the main room. I appreciated that you showed up, but just just the numbers, if you will, tonight. We've had right around seventy volunteers work with the City of Shelton this year to date. Over seventeen or just about seventeen hundred hours total that these individuals have put into helping us man advisory committees, providing support through the comprehensive plan, working on a park project, hanging art in our public space outside, working with the creative district formation. It's really what makes our city go, and the city is that public engagement and volunteerism. If you extrapolated just those hours into minimum wage, it's over twenty-eight thousand dollars of value, just hourly. At an hourly wage, an hourly wage, so I want to continue to recognize these individuals. We provided coffee and cookies, which isn't enough to thank them. But as I said tonight, those of you that volunteer, you do it because, you know, it makes you feel good, not necessarily because of the recognition you get publicly, but we'll take the the short amount of time to recognize people, say thank you again, continue to say thank you as they work through these processes, working with our staff throughout the year. And I'll transition into this weekend with holiday magic, the Christmas parade, and the tremendous amount of volunteerism that takes to to create these pro, these these programs and these projects. These aren't recognized within the numbers I just gave you. These are, these are separate to that, and it takes a vast amount of people to organize these events and put them together. Unfortunately, we're going to see a little bit of rain. If people still come out, if people still participate and have a great time, and it's great, great to see all of the involvement there, so tree lighting ceremony Friday evening downtown Shelton, fire pits in the middle of the street, kids can roast marshmallows, I guess it's called, it's called marshmallows too, right? And then and then the Christmas parade, again, on, referred on Saturday, Saturday afternoon, evening, when it, when it becomes dark, so looking forward to all those activities and the council's participation in the parade on Saturday.
So any questions or comments from Mark?
All right. Mark, thank you for all the work you've done the past three decades here and creating such a beautiful space.
As long as you said you're going to cooperate.
This is the closest thing to Bedford Falls that I've seen in the wild. We are so close to having this beautiful, perfect place where we think about our, how everyone in our community has a role, and that subtracting one of us is going to affect all of us. So think about that in this, in these times that we hope are trending towards Bedford Falls and not Pottersville during this time of Christmas. So thank you very much for all your hard work, and we're inspiring all the volunteers and for having a lot of volunteer programs set up, all our beautiful parks and the beautiful community that we have. So thank you so much.
It's a testament to the staff. It really is. So we will certainly pass it on for those that aren't here tonight, able to hear your kind words. We'll certainly pass it on to the rest of the staff.
Anything else, Mark? The council have any new items for discussion tonight? We don't know. Well, we'll see everybody at festivities this weekend, or next meeting is Tuesday, December seventeenth at six P M. We have a study session December tenth at six P M. And this meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-four P M.